So did you get that webpage straightened out?
No, I haven't. I do the best I can with what I got to work with.
I was just being facetious.
You know, I wasn't here. I was not here.
You know why, right?
Yeah, I know. I try really hard to get it done.
You're being funny.
I did, I know.
Well, you're not a successful man.
I'm not a successful man, though. I don't have the rea-
We'll call a meeting to order. This is the Waldeboro Select Board, February 25th, 5 o'clock. And the first item on the agenda is to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Alex is here.
We don't have any public hearings. We don't have any presentations. There is one adjustment to the agenda, and that is that we go into executive session at the end of this meeting, before the meeting with the planning board, to talk about the town report dedication.
The selection of the person. It can't-
We don't want to name-
Personal matter.
Yeah, so would you like to make the motion?
I make a motion.
Oh, sorry. Yes, to make the adjustment.
Not now. Yes, to the adjustment, to the adjustment. 13.2, personal matter, executive session.
Okay, and it will be under, thank you Katie, under 13.2, right?
13.2.
Okay. Is there, and there's a second, any discussion? All in favor? Okay, good. Send us some comments. Goodness, wow. Okay, um, select board comments. No?
I'm all set.
Jan?
Um, well, condolences to Julie and her family, and her boss and nephew, that's a significant thing. Just one thing. I've had a few comments from some citizens and, you know, about, I don't know, it was just about something that was done in fun. But I think we need to be careful to be extra kind, since we tend to be role models in, in the town. There's some things that we might think are humorous, others don't. So I think maybe we can just, um, just try to be as kind as we can be, whether we agree or disagree, or whether we think something is funny or not funny, just to use kindness.
Abden?
No, I'm all set.
Okay, I have nothing, except to welcome back Julie. Good to have you back.
Thank you. Good to be back.
Town manager's report.
I don't have that one, I'm sorry.
I can understand why. Move on to the consent calendar.
Make a motion to approve? Second.
Any discussion on that? We don't have any correspondence to read. Any further comments or discussion? All in favor? That's approved, thank you. And new business. And we're going to hear from Daryl today about the assessors office. Thank you for showing up.
The middle one. Well, that's where the microphone is.
Thank you for the opportunity to update you on assessing. Deeds are updated on the 1st and the 15th of each month. So we get those straight from the registry over the copier. And there were 352 in 19, up 196 of deeds. So there was 156 in 18, with more than double in the volume of deeds being processed. Sales were pretty steady. There were 153 sales totaling $23,222 in sales.
Is that the calendar year they're on?
That would be calendar year 19, up 7 from 18, which was 146, but it was still $23 million in, in sale. Foreclosures, you've asked in the past, was at 14, up 3 from 11 a year before. So they're still there. Homesteads are going to go from 20 to 25 this year. That was voted in last year. Last year it was worth $364. This year it's probably worth about $475, if they sign up and get it. There was $30 million in value, $522,000 in homesteads. That'll go to $37,579. So up $7 million there that the state will reimburse, or $128,000. Everyone with a homestead should have received a $104 check. There was $1,515 sent out. Two have been in, couldn't cash them because of divorce. If they bring their check in that they can't cash, we can reprocess it. So those two left their checks and get a new check from the state in their name only. There were 224 new people that should get homesteads. We send out the applications each year to make them available if they want it. I had one lady finally just came in after 20 years, assumed it was for a ranch or a farm. Didn't realize it was for everybody. But 47 have signed up so far out of that potential. Solar and wind will be exempt this year. Last year there were 38 solar people that we valued at $161,000. There were seven permits for new, so we got about 45 solar installations out there. This Friday, there's going to be a meeting where they're going to hand out the application. If you have solar, you're going to be sent an application. You have to return it by April 1st to get the exemption. If you don't return it, we tax it.
How do you make, how do you know for sure who has solar and who doesn't? Especially if it's sitting on the roof somewhere?
Riding around last year, noted all that I could see. And the fire department particularly wants to know. So if there's a fire, they know they need to do something to disconnect that before they... So what I could visually see, I noted. Re-solar, most of the companies do get the permits. So we get building permits for seven. But there's possibilities that there are units out there I don't know about.
You don't have to do an application to the, to a solar?
No.
To do solar?
I don't know if it's on the roof, I don't think we do.
A building permit, they have been getting building permits.
You have to have a building permit to put up a solar panel?
And generally, the companies again are getting the building permits that are doing them, and they're also getting plumbing permits if they're looking into a plumbing system.
So sorry, you said we have harmony in town?
There were 38 identified last year and taxed, and there is seven permits. So that would be 45.
I'm surprised the number isn't larger than that.
That's what I'm aware of. Other things that went out, there were 78 folks under the farmland, and each year we ask for their income. So every five years, we got to get it. That represents just over $4 million under farmland. Tree growth, there are 53 in tree growth. If you buy a property in tree growth, you have a year to get a plan in. Or if it's every 10 years, you have to update. And that represents about $5 million off. Open space, there are 16 at a million off. And a working waterfront, there's one at $46,000 is the reduced value there. Right now, working on the personal property letters will go out. There's 329 accounts. Tractors, there's 275 accounts. And Bettey, which is the business equipment tax exemption, there are about 130 accounts. So working on 734 pieces to go out to them to get back, so we can value personal property.
Could you explain the Bettey again?
The Bettey is an exemption where if you had a $100,000 piece of equipment, you did not pay any tax. Previously, it was known as better, and it's for manufacturing, not for retail. But previously, if you had that $100,000, you would pay the tax to us. Let's say it was $1,000, and you could get $500 back from the state.
But you hadn't reported to you to get that back?
You had to report it, and you had to file a year later. You had to pay it, get it back. So we got $1,000, they got $500 back. Then they came out with Bettey, that they don't have to pay anything, and we only get $500 back. We don't get our $1,000, we lose half.
They being the taxpayer doesn't have to pay?
Correct, the taxpayer, but they got to fill out the form, they got to sign it, and attest to it.
So that kind of screws the town, because if they-
We lose half.
Well, if they don't file it, then you don't get the $500, right?
If they don't file it, then we can tax them and get the $1,000 out of them. In, in theory.
In theory.
Yes, if they do not sign the form every year, then they're taxed. Then they have to pay us the full amount.
Is this for businesses only, or is this for everybody?
Businesses.
Just businesses?
What's new, the EEO farm took out their building permit. So that's presumably going to be built, if you're not familiar with that. The estimated structure value was $2,948. They took out their permit on 2/14/2020. It's a 27,072 square foot building, 94 by 288. That permit fee was $8,171.60, so they've already contributed that amount to the town. That is in our TIF district, so when we tax it a year from now, all the money will go into the TIF funds.
And where is this?
That is up at 110 One Pi Road.
That's up the business front.
Oh, yeah.
The other thing that came before the planning board, if you weren't aware, or I'm sure you are, was the solar farm up on North Waldeboro Road. It'll be 10.7 fenced-in acres, 8,460 modulars. Right now, I believe, I'll find out Friday, that would be exempt under this exemption. But that was not the intent of most of the legislatures. They're trying to fix it and say they meant to intend, intended to exempt. Residents is not big solar farms, but who knows where that'll all go. If it is exempt, then we would only collect on half of... And they're going to tell us how we should be valuing. On Friday, there's different ways to put a value on it.
So sorry, if it's exempt, and it's a business? It's a solar farm that's-
Well, that's, that's, solar, whether it's residential, you don't have to be a business to be exempt. Solar is exempt, solar and wind. For everyone.
You said something about half.
If, if it's exempt, under that, we only get half reimbursed from the state again.
Under Bettey? Under Bettey?
No, under solar exemption. Total, brand-new program, whole new form. I got to send out the forms, I got to keep another set of records, value it, and then they reimburse half. Because they only give us half when they create a new exemption. If it's, if they change the legislation and it's not exempt, I think right now, up to like 20 acres of solar fields are exempt. And they just said that wasn't the intent when they passed the legislation.
How do they fund that 50% that they give back?
Through our tax dollars, Bob.
Just asking the question, that's all.
Out of the revenues that come to the state.
Okay. And is that a special fund?
Oh, it's very special. It's for the, it's for the people that can afford solar.
Supposedly, there is another one in the works in North Waldeboro, but nothing's been forward on that.
It's, I just don't understand. How can something that, it just doesn't make sense to me, Daryl.
I've asked a question. I think we should have a little conversation. We don't have a lot of time.
Well, but it's-
It's important what you're saying.
It is. I, I'm, I have poverty, I have people at living, I have 36% of my people living at a poverty level. And now, the people who, I, I just don't understand. I thought that was the whole point, was supposed to, oh, I'm done. Getting off on a tangent. I just, I find it disturbing that it seems there's such an inequity. That's all.
Well, the solar people and the companies feel they shouldn't be taxed at all.
I understand, because they, and I, and I get they're saving the world, one solar panel at a time. I get that. And I'm not saying I disagree with the use of solar. But what I'm saying is, at some point, we just, you can't keep giving breaks.
So as a vote of assesses, you will have to determine how you're going to value. We value 200 a panel, is what we assessed last year. But you will come in with a new, there's a four-tier formula, and then there's cash flow, discounted cash flow. There's methods you can use. And presumably, if you use a realistic method, we'll come up with values for our solar.
Is the productive capacity of the panel part of that formula?
There's another, what they call a PV, that you can go and plug everything in, and it'll tell you the capacity. That's another element that you can use. Probably if we overtax it, the state, it's exempt, the state is probably not going to give us full 50%. They'll challenge us on it, I'm sure.
You'll find out more Friday?
So, unjust as it may be, this is a moneymaker for the town if we do it? Or just for the taxpayer?
It's a moneymaker for the town if you assess solar.
Right.
If you ignore it, then you don't get any money.
But the legislation as it stands now says they can't be taxed.
As it stands?
We, we can value it and get 50% reimbursed.
Right.
Or we can just ignore it and not get any money back from the state.
Right now?
Right now, today.
But what, but when does the new law take effect where you said it can't be?
Well, the new law supposedly is only going to go after solar farms and get them out of the-
Okay, so the residential's?
Is on.
Okay.
That's not supposed to change.
Is on, meaning it's-
It's exempt.
It's exempt.
I'm just saying, again, if you're looking at it, if I, if, if Jan put an addition on her house, she would have to pay more-
Full value.
Full value. So people who are just trying to eke out, cut their little place in the world, and put something on that they can afford for their family, they're taxed full. But some, but somebody who can-
Multi-million dollar business.
It doesn't seem fair.
It's a break.
That's all.
The other side of that coin, though, just to be fair, and I'm not advocating for or against here, but if they're manufact, if they're producing that electricity, it's a 3.3-megawatt farm they're going to put up out there. And they're selling it, for example, to our school district. And they're charging just say 10 cents a kilowatt hour. That's 6 cents less per kilowatt hour than the school district is paying to CNP right now. That saves everybody.
Agreed, but if it's not, if they're not the off-takers, and all the off-takers are from away?
Then yours. It's a more general benefit, it's not a direct benefit.
If the town of Waldeboro's not getting any of that power, what good does it give for us to give them a tax break?
I'm just saying, it just, it's very, if you put, make an improvement to your home, you get taxed on that improvement. You get evaluated on that improvement, and then, and essentially taxed. I'm just saying. There's got to be some reasonableness here. Because the people who can afford it are getting the bigger break than the, it just-
It's the way the world is, we're welcome to get the breaks. Or the tax breaks.
Well, and I, I get, you're already getting, you're already, if you're putting up solar, in this case, you're already getting some of the federal benefit of it. I'm just, I'm just questioning, it just doesn't seem fair.
If there is a silver lining in the cloud, it is that that federal tax break is being squeezed more and more as new legislation passes.
It's just, it's the, one of those unintended consequences, obviously, if that happens.
Who is this solar farm going to benefit?
Person that builds it.
What?
We don't know.
The owner?
We went to the hearing at the planning board last, I think it was last Wednesday that they had it. And they don't know yet who their customers are going to be. They didn't, or if they do, they didn't say. I'm guessing they're not building it on spec. So they probably have a pretty good idea of who they want to sell it to.
Hopefully, hopefully to-
Right, no, go ahead.
Hopefully to Pot of Waldeboro, like?
I, I have no idea, Katie.
They don't know yet. But my other point is, so the people who were paying taxes on their solar, on their home, are now exempt from that?
Yes.
So we're going to lose that tax?
Yes.
So that's my point, too, is like, what's the difference between that and a kitchen?
We're going to get half of it back from the state.
But we will, okay.
Is it every year? Or just once, every year?
Every year.
And presumably, that tax goes down, or the valuation goes down, so the tax goes down every year, because these things depreciate over time. I'll be a slow way.
I think they're, they're going to value it so low that they, you know, I think there, there's like a four-tier, if it's a little system, it's, we put $1,000 value on it, we leave it there, we don't.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Well, you guys have to figure that out when you meet us.
Because the other way is if it's a $5 million project, then you're probably going to get into valuing it every year. Yes. Assessments are dictated by sale price, so where are we on our sales? I think this is the big question. The 2020 state valuation covered July of '17 to June of '18. There were 52 sales used, and we were at 101%. So prior to that, for about seven years, we were at 110%. We've come off the 110, we're back into the 100. They haven't done the 2021s, there's usually a two-year lag. But that will cover the July 18s to June of 19s. There are about 84 sales. There's, they can either do an individual sale on waterfront, one on non-waterfront, or just do a combined and put them all together if they don't have enough sales on one or the other, and they usually do it both ways. Whatever benefits the town, they take care of it. The waterfront came in at 97, and the non-waterfront at 95. So we've gone from one old, one, we'll say, down to 95.
So values, market-wise, have gone up a bit?
Yes. 2022 will be based on July of 19s to June of 2020. So we've got 50 sales already in that bracket, and we're looking at about 90%. So we're dropping about 5% a year. If we continue on this trend, we're going to need to put our assessments and adjustments, because we need to be within 10% of our reimbursements to give our exemptions at 100%.
So you're almost at your trigger point.
We are almost there. It'll be a key, everybody keeps saying that this market isn't going to continue, but we'll see what November brings, and we'll see what happens. Have we peaked, and it's going to go back down? Or do we need to adjust? But we're there, we're pretty much there. We don't, we're within 10% this year, we're okay. Again, there's a two-year lag. But next year, we'll probably have to seriously look at it if, if it's below the 90. We're about half the sales in. That's pretty much what I had. The Property Tax Institute's coming up in May, that's over to Sunday River. This year's topics are low-end residential properties, basically mobile homes, and mobile home parks. So that's the presentation this year that we'll be huddled up to speed on.
Thank you. Any questions?
Good job.
Yeah.
Is that what you were looking for?
Lot of numbers, you have lots and lots of numbers there.
Daryl always does.
Well, the fact that you're close to valuations is, is a testament to your expertise and your diligence. Thank you.
Well, it was pretty scary looking at a lot of those sales. If you looked at, there were like 10 in the 60s, 70s, 80s, 90s. You know, it's kind of all over the place, but we'll see where it boils out. Some people do real well with their sale. Got a lot of properties they haven't sold for years, they have sold, so they're moving them.
That's good.
Thank you, Daryl.
Thank you.
Have a good night, Daryl, have a safe ride home.
Will do.
Okay. John Martins and Ruben Maher have both been attending and have expressed an interest in becoming members of the Economic Development Committee. Is there a motion to appoint him to that committee?
So moved.
Is there a second? There's moved and seconded, any discussion?
Have they both been interviewed?
No.
Well, Ruben has prior.
Oh, yeah, okay, that's what I'm kind of getting at.
Ruben's the chairman of the communications committee. And John Martins has attended two of the meetings already. He's participated.
He's the gentleman who was here the night of Maine Health's presentation?
Yeah.
Oh, the one that wasn't, oh, from Chapel Road?
Yeah, he lives on Chapel Road, he was back there with the new resident.
Okay, sitting in the back row?
He was like there, yes, sitting in the back row. Dark-haired gentleman. At that breakfast that you couldn't come to, is the first time I met him, and he wanted to get involved. And I was explaining, oh, we have these openings, which committees had openings. And he came to, I, I haven't been to the last two EDC meetings, so, but apparently he has.
But he did make out an application?
Oh, he did.
And he got interviewed, he didn't get interviewed?
No.
Is he going to?
I, I don't see a need for it. I've seen him in action, and the guy's, he made some good contributions at that last meeting. We sent out that survey. And that's one of his fields of expertise. He's a communications guy for, I believe it's Maine Health. And, uh, yeah.
That's what his job, yeah, communication.
He's, he's active already, I just didn't see a point in making him go through that. So in that sense, I guess we're where we are. Any further discussion? The motion's been made and seconded. Ready to vote? Ready to vote? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions?
I just don't, I, I'm just, I thought our policy had that we interview them. That was, that's only my, I don't know the person. And it, it just hit me strange that we can, I think he's a good guy, or something that, I don't know, I thought our policy, that's what I was looking for, to see if we, I thought we had decided that we would interview people. I know we did. And then we changed it to, we would only interview people if they were new, hadn't been on a previous committee. So I just wonder why we have the rule if we don't, if we don't follow it. I'm just looking to see what it says here. I think it, um, let me see. Maybe I don't know, maybe it's in here.
It should be in here. Yes, Subcommittee of Two Select Board Members and Town Managers, Desne, shall review and evaluate all applications, shall schedule interviews with as many applicants as they deem necessary. So I suppose they could do that. Just seemed a little unusual to me not to. I don't think it's a putting a person through anything to get to meet the town officials and get to know them, and them he, he them.
He or she.
Yep, she. So, I don't know, that's what I was, that's why I didn't put my hand up, because I was looking for that, it's just, uh-
So we'll count that as an abstention?
Well, I don't think that that, it can't be an abstention.
No, that doesn't meet the, the qualification of abstention. Can only abstain-
You're right.
If it's a personnel, personal matter, if she's personally involved.
And if it brings money, if, if money comes to me and that is, don't even know the person, no.
There's three votes, four?
Right, I just wasn't ready to vote when you did it.
And one non-vote. Does that have fair character?
She just said she wasn't ready to vote.
I wasn't ready to vote when you, when you called that. I was looking for our policy. You know, it just-
Okay, let's move on. So that passed.
But, wait, wait, wait. I think she wants to vote now.
Oh, Deshik, would you like to?
Yeah. It said I wasn't ready, now I'm okay, I just, I found it. It's, you know, it's- I will, I will vote, vote for that. I just, you know, I think in the future, we should just be consistent.
We need to, moving on, we need to set a date for the public hearing regarding the franchise agreement spectrum.
It should be the first meeting in April.
April 14.
14. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'm seconding.
Any further discussion on this one? All in favor? Okay, that passed. Hold business, extension on marijuana moratorium. And we need to set a date for a hearing to do that.
March 10?
March 10 should be, and that is the last day that we can vote on the extension, so-
Yes, then we better do it.
We need to do it. We need to hold the hearing and then decide what we want to do. Okay, so is there a motion to have a hearing on March, March 10 regarding the marijuana moratorium extension?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Sorry.
Further discussion?
Did you just, to go along with the marijuana, did you see the headline in the Portland paper yesterday that our third, that medical marijuana is the third largest crop, say, in Maine? Third to potatoes, lobsters, potatoes, and then medical marijuana.
Wow.
$111.6 million industry. Twice what people in that field thought it would be.
Wow, yeah, yeah.
Love to get high on it.
Now, it's the medic, it's the medical part, not the other.
Same thing.
Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor? Okay, so we'll have that hearing at our next meeting. Any items you'd like to have on next, the next meeting's agenda?
Maine Water will be here.
Okay. And that will be to discuss their, their rates?
The rates and the our rates, not their rates.
No, sorry.
Their our rates.
Our rates.
And the...
And the contract?
Contract.
And don't forget the marijuana moratorium.
Yeah.
Right.
Communications, just the leftover from last.
Yeah.
Communications.
Yeah, we tried to keep this meeting light since we knew we had a 6 o'clock start.
Makes sense to me.
Looking at the time, I was a wise decision to move Maine Water.
Yeah, I agree. I guess we need to move into executive session?
There's no Philbrook?
No.
No Philbrook.